All right. Thank you. Sorry about that delay. First, we'll start with public hearing number one, proposal law. Number 12 of the year 2022 to amend chapter 11 of the city code relative to towing fees, storage fees, and towing service insurance coverage. Anybody here to speak to that? Again, for public hearing number one, proposal law number 12 for the year 2022 to commit amendment on chapter 11 of the city code relative to towing fees, storage fee, and towing service insurance coverage. Last call, proposal law number 12 for the year 2022 to amend chapter 11 of the city code relative to towing fees, storage fee, and towing service insurance coverage. Public hearing number two. Prolo law number 13 of the year 2022 to amend article 238 of the city code related to smoking on public property. But here's to that. Okay, you can just walk up to the podium and identify yourself, please. Hi. Did I identify yourself? You see it turn that on. It's on. Slide towards you.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Danielle Wimby. I go by she/her. I live on Green Bush Street.
Wait.
Wimby, W I M B I S H. All right, so thank you all for holding public hearing tonight on this local law 13. I wanted to share that I am not a smoker. However, I do not approve this law. I feel that, you know, I want to promote. Air quality for the public, correct? We also don't want to impose fines upon people that may not be able to pay them at this time, especially with inflation being at the rate that it is. Another couple of examples, I did take a look at the map along with the law and the streets that were listed, and it looks, it looked a little odd to me because I do know that there are residences on Main Street, not some of the side streets as well, that this law seems as though it would actually had an impact on those residents. And my question, I guess, is what is the alternative for those residents that that do smoke and may not be allowed to smoke in their apartments? As we know, many people and landlords still allow smoking in their apartments. What is the alternative for that? Have there been any considerations of creating designated smoking areas in public spaces, which is something I've seen implemented in, you know, other cities, especially in Europe? A lot. I noticed that back in like 2008, way back, right? So, you know, making sure that we have those considerations in place. And then the other thing too that I thought would be impacted would be some of the businesses on Main Street. There are a lot of bars on Main Street, and I know that many people that go out and have a drink or two tend to want to have a cigarette. Again, I'm not a smoker. I actually do have asthma. But I don't feel that I should impose fines on these people if they're in a designated smoking area, or if they're really not causing any major harm to the public. I've been on Main Street a few times since COVID has kind of let up, and I have not noticed a huge increase in smoking. But again, I, you know, I know that I'm not there all the time. I also haven't really noticed many cigarette clubs. I've noticed that a lot of bars do tend to have the disposal for cigarette clubs available. And I guess, you know, gesture is if you do go forward with implementing this law, has there been consideration as to where you would put those signs so that they're very visible to people that come in here as tourists as well? Because, like I said, you know, knowing that businesses, there are a lot of bars on on Main Street, I think it would probably negatively. Thank you.
Keep your. There's another hand here, yes. Grant, identify yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Hamilton. I am a public health educator and also the community engagement coordinator for the Tobacco Free Program with the Portland County Health Department. And I am here as a cheerleader and supporter for measures such as this that that do improve and enhance the quality of life and the health of our community. While this action may not seem like a big deal, or while pursuing to some, I'm here to say that it is important and can make a difference. The scientific evidence with the toxicity of tobacco smoke is pretty overwhelming and indisputable. There is no safe level of tobacco smoke, even outdoors, even brief exposure to smoke can really do damage to somebody with respiratory illness, somebody with asthma, allergies. And it just shouldn't be a risk to the public's health. And it shouldn't, it just shouldn't have to be something that they would have to make a conscious effort to avoid. Secondhand marijuana smoke, I mean, that's something that we've been delving in quite a bit with with our tobacco program, and it does have some of the same toxic and carcinogenic substances in marijuana smoke. And there's also the risk of exposure to THC. Secondly, you are creating a more welcoming and accessible environment, and this fits right in with the downtown revitalization project that's underway. You're enhancing curb appeal, you're improving image, and you reduce litter. You also do support the efforts of tobacco users who do want to quit. Most people do want to quit at some point, and making it inconvenient, fewer spaces, it helps. It's it's an addiction that we work very hard with our program to assist and to help people with their cravings and with their with their addictions, providing the places. It's just we're moving out of that. We're trying to build a healthier community, help those that are addicted to tobacco. And we're also demonstrating to future generations that the behavior is not desirable and unacceptable. So we're really looking forward to the next generation where we have a pretty significant vaping problem, and I'm very concerned about legalization of marijuana and what these kids may or may not know what they're using. So I do think it's important that everyone's right to breathe clean, tobacco-free, cannabis-free air is important, especially in public shared spaces. So policies like this do have an impact. We've seen results over the years with policies like this. And and as the program coordinator, we would help you, the city, with signage, with help cessation resources for those that are seeking to quit, and we'll do everything we can to make this successful. Thank you.
Keep your input. Anybody else? The last call for proposal law number 13 of the year 2022 to amend article 238 of the city code related to smoking on public property. They will close the public hearings and will call to order. Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Silman is recorded absent. Councilmember Pannello.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith and Michael's recorded absent. All right. If you get a moment of silence and reflection for express cancer, wear it this month and take a stand for the monthly violence as well. Thank you. Rock Masons and the presentation chief Sandy. We would have some more officers to bring forward. Thank you for this opportunity. As a way of recognizing our officers and making sure the public knows what great people are protecting this community, and then we've decided to start making these presentations public, giving officers their recognition that they are due. I have Officer Bush and K9 Rumble with us, and I have Officer Michael Maniachi with us this evening. And they will each be receiving a letter and an award pen where under. And I'm going to paraphrase the letter because it's kind of the same for each other. On March 17th, Officer Bush and Officer Maniachi responded to a residence in the city of Corlin for a self-inflicted injury. On arrival, an unconscious individual was located inside the residence with a large laceration to his wrist. I believe he was inside a bathroom blocking the door, so it was difficult to get in, but the officers made every effort and got the individual. The individual was bleeding profusely, and they applied direct pressure and attempted to slow the bleeding. Officer Bush then applied a tourniquet to the individual's arm and stopped him bleeding. He'll see arrived shortly thereafter and took over medical care and transported the individual to Guthrie. Where his injury was treated. The individual combat veteran survived this incident, due in large part to the quick selfless actions taken by these two officers. Their performance and quick action tending to this serious situation is nothing short of exemplary. Their decisive action and teamwork demonstrated their professionalism and commitment to citizens of this city. Actions like these keep our community safe and reflect positively, not only on these officers, but the officers of the Corlin City Police. There is no doubt a life was saved. And I congratulate you both on your job well done. A copy of this department commendation will be forwarded to the board of police commissioners and placed in your file. I want to honor you each for the lifesaving pin. Wear proudly on your vest. Although you don't wear a main year vest. Here is a copy of your letter of commendation. And it will go into your file. Thank you both. Your job well done. And we did get a thank you from the family of this gentleman for saving this. And the families of these two officers who are in the back should be extremely proud of them. This officer chose not to be here. She's not big on the limelight. But she deserves the recognition. On October 25th, 1993, Sergeant Penny Guerrero was sworn in as a police officer with this agency, and has served the members of the agency and community with honor, dignity, and loyalty for more than 28 years. It was during this time she worked at various positions, including parole, patrol officer, uniform sergeant, and ultimately, record sergeant. In 2016, the Corlin Police Department became an accredited agency, who in large part to the years of hard work and dedication on her part as accreditation manager. In 2021, our agency was scheduled to assessment for a second assessment in October of 2021, in keeping with the five-year reaccreditation process. In March of 2021, upon my promotion to chief of police, we discovered we had a great deal of work ahead of us to maintain our accreditation. The COVID pandemic of 2020 had left our records division shorthanded and backward, with little for her to devote, little time for her to devote to accreditation. However, with some outside assistance and three-month extension on our assessment, and her driven personality, we're all kept on task. A task which initially believed to be insurmountable became reality. Nearly four years of work was accomplished in mere nine months, thanks to the dedication and command personnel and your leadership as accreditation manager. Our three-day assessment commencing in January 25th, 2022 was nearly flawless, with only a few minor adjustments to it. The three assessors who brought through our policies and procedures and daily practices were extremely complimentary under professionalism of the command, our officers, and most importantly, Sergeant Corra. It was noted that her hard work and attention to detail had made their task much easier than most assessment situations. On March 10th, 2022, the New York State Law Enforcement Agency Accreditation Council unanimously voted for our agency to maintain accreditation status, giving this department a stamp of excellence and professionalism. Your hard work, Sergeant Corra, and dedication to attain this goal are nothing short of exemplary. Your actions have proven genuine commitment to law enforcement profession, this agency, and the citizens of the city of Corlin, leading to this exceptional achievement. Due to the guidance and leadership with throughout the process, the citizens of Corlin can rest assured that the officers of this agency are well-trained, well-managed, and uphold the highest standards of professionalism and performance of their duties protecting this community. It is for this reason she is being recognized as police officer of the year for 20 political. I present her with a letter, and she will also have a pin for officer of the year to wear on her uniform. Thank you, Sergeant Guerrero. I wish you would have come today, but I will give her an award. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Everybody to the floor. If anybody signed up, let's quickly to the floor. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I try to make this brief, but there's a lot to cover. First, I want to, I want to address the budget. At last meeting, we, you know, the budget should have been, should be turned in. A copy should be submitted to the board on the 15th. I was hoping that the audit would be done before I did that because it would make more sense to adjust where we had to for the last year's budget. So I put the cutoff, the drop deadline date of November 1st with hearings with our, which is our next meeting, with budget review hearings scheduled on the second, third, ninth, and 10th if needed. And those will be six to eight so that we can adopt from the council on the 15th. That will put us back on date. So we're going to be 16 days late on refiling that budget. But due to changes within many staffing levels within our finance department audit ongoing and limited staffing help, I determined it was more important to put a competent budget together and address it confidently. So I will continue working with department heads to finalize those numbers and get something to you on November 1st. So that's, want to make sure that's noted. Next. So a meeting last week with mental health, DSS, Catholic Charities, Family Counseling, Section 8, Police Department, and Code Office, and all the land, as many landlords as we could get filled in this room from city landlord. The discussionary topics were home, you know, home, back, quality of homes and homeless situation. We basically put it in some of the panel up here with all of the professional organizations and the nonprofits, and then we had all landlords approach. It was a very respectful meeting and very positive, and some good information shared back and forth. DSS is going to, we're going to follow up with a meeting on that on January 11th at 5:00 PM with those agencies again to, because there's so much value that came out of that with some more information that will be help fix some of our housing stock issues. So, and then with that, some in November, we're going to also schedule the talk about the other code issue that we're changing with the housing committee. Attended the Alton Parker recognition by Judge Massler did at the courthouse. That was an outstanding event and some great history here. The CEO of Guthrie Regarding Hospital Community Relations to try to prove them. We're still ongoing with the county with redistricting, and that continues on. Met with an interested buyer and another one again tomorrow for Parker School. Look at that. We're still waiting on council to finalize some of the details of how, what can happen with that. Hopefully, that's more of that. At a health, the RFPs did not, there was no RFP that came back on the health insurance. So I met with an individual that I worked with at the county level and then through another contact, they were to get another person to hopefully review that. So that call has been placed to them. But between those two, hopefully you get some numbers back on them to review back to the helping retiree health insurance plan. We do it, we did have an issue over the weekend where the health retirees got dropped off the plan for whatever reason from the RX plan, from the prescription plan. And that problem has been resolved. We resolved that first thing Monday morning, but it was just an error in application process between Blue Cross Blue Shield and sent to them. Of course, it was blamed that we were to change them over and they weren't aware. But but there was an error in that, and that's that's from the consortium and Blue Cross Blue Shield, they think that that should be addressed. If anybody has an issue or here, somebody has an issue, please let my office know. Counting down, I'll let Ms. Lane talk about that. We spoke about Corica. The rental housing committee continues to move forward with another meeting tomorrow. Those are going, you know, progressively slow, but they're getting, get some good dialogue and good conversations with that. With the energy coming up, constituent brought up a good point of how difficult it is to make make things beat. Smart Energy at Nice Egg dot com has ways to help with your heat and your electric and saving ideas. We'll do that. And don't forget about our water assistance program as well, which can be accessed through CAPCO, Office of the Aging, or the state at 518-473-0732. Those are all important. They can be helpful for people that are in trouble trying to get their water bills paid. Remind everybody that Crop Walk is Sunday. The parking lot and parking lots, you saw, it's all done, and youth bureau is done. They're doing a walking trail, as Mr. Perdido talked about in his district. They're following up the tart down in your district. I'm just sure Miss Dell will do that. Code Office has been working hard. And more importantly, Thursday, between 6:00 and 8:00, at Greek Peak at the lookout, Hope Lake Lodge, the chief in DC will be putting together their best concoction of food. And I did as I am as well, to stand against domestic violence. So there's up to 200 tickets can be purchased there. I think they're going pretty pretty quickly. So anybody can make that event and judge and fly some gent this way, that goes this way, that'd be helpful. And I think that's all. Chief's going down. Okay, the word recently. Do you have any questions on anything? Any questions on the finance part of it? We understand that. Okay, one reports.
Would you like to include the citizen of the year?
Yeah.
So let's start with why I was absent two weeks ago. I was at the citizen of the year award at Tenelli's, and that was through the Bayton Powell Council. And the city also awarded the same individual citizen of the year. Norm Stitzel is the Marine League head, huge part of the DAB, involved with the Legion as well as the VFW, and the founder of Vetzare, which is vet search and rescue. No vet to be left behind. His biggest thing with that is to provide support to veterans in the area and not leave anyone behind. Biggest focus on daily needs if they should not be able to get those, especially when they move into the area, and then suicide prevention, which unfortunately, or fortunately, we went through a two and a half plus year period without that. And unfortunately, that ended just a week and so ago. But he's been doing an amazing job, and it was a huge, huge honor to go see how many people turned out, be able to present the award, and to be a part of that evening. Did not realize, even though I know the gentleman very well, just how many lives he's impacted, how much he means to the community, and how much he also does with the Boy Scouts. He's been doing an amazing job. It was wonderful turnout. I wish I could have brought all of you there, recorded the whole thing, and brought it for you tonight. But if you see, if you see Norm, shake his hand, say hi to him. If you have questions, ask him what he does and about all the hard work he puts in, because it's a lot. Next thing is in the ward. Most things are quiet. It seems as if, you know, some of the traffic things we've done, some of the roadwork, which by the way, has been amazing. I have, and I asked him if I could say this without their name, I have a constituent who is a nitpicker, I guess is what we would call them, very detailed. And he is so happy with the job we did on West Main. We did it the right way. According to him, it's so smooth. Thank goodness it was done. And I passed that along to Mr. Doby and the whole team. I thought it was wonderful, but when this particular individual, knowing them, came forward and said that, really meant a lot, and I wanted them to know that. I also got feedback from three other households, how much they appreciate the other roads we've done in the ward. So kudos to to our guys getting out there and getting that done. Did receive three complaints, two of them from the same household, about the speeding on Van Cusen, Van Hosen, however you want to pronounce it, right around the corner from my house. I think that street was being used a lot while the the roadwork was being done. And they would like us to consider both households, the possibility of putting in flashing stop signs and the back entrance to the park there, running a crosswalk across to the adjacent street, which I believe is joy. I think that's joy. That could be one street off. But I did go down and sit one evening after a call. I did realize that there is some excessive speed down there, even though there is parking allowed both sides of the street, which I thought would slow it down. And I did see some people moving along in a pretty good clip. Received two phone calls about the, although it's edge of the ward, about the creek that runs down through the edge of the park and the amount of needles in it. I personally thought I would not find anything, but just because I was told it was needles, I did put on some boots. I walked down through there. I was told there was an area toward the Hamlin side of the footbridge where I would see some needles. I did see some needles, went ahead and picked those up with with some leather gloves and put them in some containers, got rid of them. There was four needles there. The question in the ward is what can we do about this on the edge of our ward? It could bleed into our ward. It's going to bleed into somebody else's. How may we help this? I said that I would go ahead and ask that question further. And, you know, this was in the last few days, so I have not asked that question the appropriate parties yet, but we'll move forward. Other than that, all has been going pretty good. We did go ask some people about some of the issues we're going to vote on tonight, and they were more concerned that things were going so well than talking about that actual issue. And I thought that was absolutely, absolutely wonderful that people were happy, that things were going well. So I think the people have been reaching out and asking for what they want and receiving it. And I see that all across the city. I think it's great that we're that we're getting the job. Like it's great that we're that we're getting the job done.
So a few things, um in the third ward, um I want to first to thank codes. Um, for an issue that as soon as I was elected, they got involved with a house. And it is now finally nine months later um being addressed and being. Fixed, so thank you, Roy and all the codes. Um, couple of other things, uh I had a constituent on Hamlin Street between Madison and Broad Nav. Contact me about speeding and I reached out to Chief Sandy and uh. The police put their sign up, you know, that that regulates speeding, so she was very, very pleased about that. Um, I also had a couple of other issues in the ward. Um, and I reached out to Chief Sandy and those issues were resolved. The other big thing right now that I'm I'm really working on and starting to work on. I've reached out to the D E C and I have um. A a friend in the D E C and people in my ward are still asking about the walking trails in the waterworks. Behind and what's going to happen, is there any movement toward that? So I reached out to this person and he's going to put me in touch with, and I wanna make sure I hit the office right. Uh, Division of Environmental Permits at the D E C. And see exactly what needs to be done regulation wise to move forward. Um, and and what we might need to do as a city, so that's, so I'm gonna start that conversation. You wanna talk about our meeting?
Yes, yes.
Uh, so, um when the city was placed in the fiscal stress category. By the Controller's Office. I have a contact, um the regional rep for the controller. Here in central New York and uh I reached out to her to be able to set up a meeting. Um, with mayor, myself and someone in the Controller's Office to figure out why we're in this situation. And she put me in touch with the deputy controller Elliot Arbuthnot. And the mayor and I had conference call with him last Tuesday. Uh, for about thirty minutes and I'm actually. As a result of that meeting, we are going to also be meeting with uh Controller Denapoli between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So he was very complimentary that we're trying to address this situation, we asked him how we got here. And he said that the Controller's Office uses a rubric. To monitor cities, the municipalities. And the city of Portland um has been in a deficit, fiscal deficit. For at least two and not three years. And there's been a cash flow issue. So those were the the causes of our being placed in the fiscal stress category. He um again was happy that we're immediately addressing it and trying to stay on top of it and get out of it, he was. Very positive that we are going to be able to as a city um make the necessary adjustments, we've already started to make adjustments. And we just need to continue doing that, he also, and this is why we wanted to bring it up tonight. He said, and we are, just continue to be very transparent as you have been since you took office. With the public and just keep letting them know exactly what's going on and just keep doing what you're doing, and so we're doing. So anyway, um we'll just keep everybody posted, but. We are definitely addressing um how previous administration got us into this situation. So we're gonna get out of it, that's the bottom line.
Thank you.
Very quiet in the fourth ward. Um, almost scary quiet. Still, there there are some speeding issues, which I said I would say every single kind. Um, in and out of the city at the far end of Totten Street. Um, have not heard from from anyone in the neighborhood. Uh, do you want me to knock the county down?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, we had a a county gown meeting yesterday. And it centered around uh the upcoming Cortica judge game. And uh I thought it was a very good meeting. Um, the game for, you know, the two people in Portland who don't know is being held at Yankee Stadium. And and I think a lot of people think, oh, well, it's all the way down to New York City, not gonna be a problem for us. For some people, it doesn't matter that there's a football game. Nor does it matter who wins or where it is. We had, this is, was it Mrs. Kimmerman?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kimmerman. Was at the meeting from the Willowbrook Golf and uh Club and she represented. The uh restaurant and bar owners and um. It was, it was a very informational meeting. Everybody knows what happened in two thousand thirteen. Um, but. Learned lessons from that, the police department, the code, there, everyone's ready, I mean, it's. We're ready for whatever happens. Um, and we really don't anticipate. Issues that can't be handled by by uh D P W, by codes, by the police department. Um, it was. I I can't wait feeling very confident that that we will not have problems.
And definitely a proactive approach.
Yes, yeah.
We look forward to growing state winning.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, pretty quiet in the fifth ward. Like to report out that um the yard waste cleanup, um folks in the neighborhood have been thankful. Uh, that D P W has made their rounds, um myself included. There, there is um, there's some, some uh folks that have reported. On an award that have been some signs removed. Um, unfortunately, I'm not sure if it was a prank or if it was intentional. Um, by one of our departments, but autism signs um have been um popping up missing. It's not a joke, um to to me or the constituents that reported that. Um, there's definitely folks in our community with autism and it can be challenging. If there's not an awareness within that neighborhood uh to address um our our residents. And provide the the a- absolute care that folks might need. Um, when coming into contact with them, and so those signs were deemed as important to that, those streets. Um, in the fifth ward, um off of Main Street, uh where they were, uh been reported. But as of right now, um haven't seen them go back up from what was reported by the constituents. And. That it it seemed like night and day, um there was a steel plate on uh Pendleton. Butcher seeing the fifth ward off near uh Coffee Mania, if anyone's had that uh still hit that steel plate, you know what I mean? Um, when they did the removal of the steel plate over there across the street from uh, I think it was the F O E Lodge there. Wasn't the the best job, so to speak, and cars, cars knew it wasn't necessarily the best job. Um, neither did your fanning, um so. Let's just say uh it was a pleasant surprise to see that that was filled in and taken care of and smoothed out. A whole lot better tonight, so thank you for that. That's it.
I'm proud of you, thank you.
Clinton had an issue with the weeds, it's been resolved, it looks like the matting's down, like uh, it's all been pulled out, everybody's seen that. Believe on that, um the park, the the pathway around Union Park or on the side of Union Park. Um, they started construction this week, looks really nice, it's wider than I thought, which is good. It looked like it should be completed by the end of next week maybe, possible. Um, the health insurance issue with retirees, I wanna thank the mayor, I called them on a Friday night, I got a bunch of calls on it, it was on Facebook. Retiree website, everybody was upset, some retirees in Florida didn't eat the medications, the mayor. Um, uh is very good as to getting that on Monday and re- resolve the issue, it did happen last year, so there's some sort of glitch or something that happens. Hopefully it will never happen again. So they're really happy with your action on that, we appreciate that, thank you. Um. Houses are mine ward, we got a couple houses, one on Front Street and we have, that's been an ongoing problem for years, um Roy. They've done a good job, and yeah, took care of it today, as to garbage and stuff, uh there's another house on North Main Street, we've been dealing with for years, and went there and. Talked to people there, so he's on that, always doing a great job as to starting and taking care of those issues, I appreciate that. Cortica job, um that was um brought up, and I remember that game, cause I was looking at Cornell that day, that game was at Ithaca. So like you said, that whole game is at Ithaca. Um, Paul, do you have, are you having the troopers and deputies coming in this year or no?
We'll have that trip before, we're not sure how many, how many changes we will be giving, hopefully we'll have support.
I remember you guys used to be on top of the street and, you know, so that's good, hopefully we'll have uh more support there, nothing will happen.
And then we'll also have two guys on both Friday and. Saturday night, checking the bars for overcrowding and also checking the neighborhoods to make sure.
Yeah, they 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 were saying that the biggest problems are not with the bars and restaurants, they're with the house parties.
Clayton, right, right, and you know, and cars too. Being the.
Police those.
Working those Clayton, that's hulking, it's tough, that a lot of us, firm people, come out of town that go to these house parties. To raise, you know, the cause of the problems, and they don't really care about visiting, and they're the ones that are causing that. That's all I have for my ward.
Yeah, the the college is really proactive, I think I'm really appreciative. And work so far, so it's not bad. All right, but thank you. Um, approval of minutes for October fourth meeting. And a motion to. Mr. Scott, Carpenter, all of them there. Resolutions. So we have two resolutions here and I just, uh, we have, and I just wanted to get your opinion, we have. More more than a third of our uh members not here. Um, and um, wow, I really, if I can get some of these things moving forward. I I wonder if it's not in the best interest to have more members here, it's not a majority vote as typical, it's a majority vote of the whole council. So whether they're not here or not, they'll be voted that way, so I think it might be, I I just wanna get everybody's opinion on that. If we do, we get a motion to table, we wouldn't have to have a public hearing, and if we did it, certainly we had to probably welcome anybody that has a conversation with their communications about it. But um I just, you know, uh we got last minute, you know, two people that had to go to a funeral and got sick and. You know, one would be maybe okay, but if you get three out, we're over a third now, so I, everybody else, I was thinking on that.
You suggesting table and the rest of the agenda?
No, just those, just those two, go go on.
One and two, I was gonna suggest there one more than everyone, so.
Right.
Okay, table one.
I think one and two. I think one, yeah, let's take those, I'm for that, yeah.
So if I get a motion to table, uh agenda item number one to uh our November first meeting. All in favor of the table to the first. And um. Then item number two, a drop. Okay, number thirteen. And I get a um motion to the table, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Carpenter, any questions? This is the table to the first, all in favor? Is there any more information on those two that you would like, if it's not something that you wouldn't want to feel looking for?
Um, I am concerned about residents, um some of that, the buttresses right up to the fifth ward. Um, on that back in the main street, and so. I'm just concerned about how many residents do have R D apartment style housing there that may have no smoking. In their house, they're they're dwelling, and so. Um, how how much of infringement would that be upon their, you know.
Yeah.
Their right to to do what they feel they need to do.
I understand, so I wanna address some good points that uh English brought up as well, um that. You know, um, you know, certainly it's not about the fines as much as it is about, you know, uh and maybe Chief Sandy can talk about enforcement real quick too. And I might have to do it again at the next meeting, but uh I think it'd be important, I think, um to to discuss that. Uh, again, it's for the the residents, the front of that, so I think. Like this Court Street, for example, and the other residents we have is the complex housing there, so they could go through. The alley, there's an alley that goes to the back, and that would be, that as well as on. That same alley has access from the backside as well, but it's more for the public. It's the public walkway, it's not the bill.
Yeah.
Law, the state law for that.
Yeah, I understand.
Their walkways, and um I don't know if there's any other residents other than just obviously people that live upstairs as well, but. They they wouldn't be able to go up in front of their building and do it, they would have to do it behind it. And the same with the, with the, with the restaurants uh and bars, um.
People wearing, but the law, it made it sound as though you couldn't look. Your any entrances or exits of any of the buildings on Main Street or those large.
No, it's.
That's why.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the front part, cause they're allowing them to do anything in the back, and these people have a way to approach that on entrance of those buildings. You know, the back entrance, they're not gonna go in as a public, so the public would need to get the front access, that's the intent.
I I think it's the way it reads.
Yeah.
It it, I mean, we're we're saying at all times within twenty five feet of any entrance or exit of any building. So I, again. That's.
The weakening, we that's could be cleaned up to clarify that, so that, cause it's not the intent to restrict that. And J would do that clean up, so we will have a public hearing for the next one, make sure that's in there, cause we'll have to modify that. Um, but that's not the intent, and again, the intent, the intent is to uh. Not, we're not trying to push people off or push people away, but every business owner, I talked to downtown restaurants, why the bar owner, why. Before I even finished the sentence, said, yes, absolutely, maybe rather, but I think there's some other ones that. You know, under smoke shops that probably not, but that being said. When you go downtown and you do have the issue, so I'll give you an example and then we can move on, but the um. We have a bench that's next to the community restaurant. That bench was moved by the community restaurant to the next alley, which was by the pawn shop because. He was tired of his people complaining and holding their breath to go in and get dinner or pick up a meal to go. Then I was contacted by a large employer downtown that has two hundred and some employees walking through the alley to go back to the parking lot, and that. That area was, then he was complaining that the bench was there and they were, everybody was smoking to do that, to dinner, so. That's gotta move back, so it's it's a constant battle, but that's the point of doing it, not just. The old, the old law, I think that's where some of that writ writing was, was, putting my feet from the, and on the doors. This is just going a little bit farther than that and and just patient for the candidates out there.
I I think it, on its basis, it's an intention, I'm just concerned about the impact of individual rights. I'm a proponent personally, I'm a not a smoker um of any kind, but at the same time. Um, just again, I think we we wanna make sure that law is balanced. Uh based on what I think the intent you're sharing is.
Yeah, so that, we'll clean, we can clean up that language if that's the concern. Um, but again, that's um, that's the intent, maybe Chief Sandy might have talked about the enforcement aspect.
I see this on parallel with, like, you know, the thing, you know, we're not telling people to get drinks, you can't. Be out on Main Street drinking, you know, on public. This kind of goes along with, you know, as the mayor said, you know, enforcement will be where needed, you know, I mean. Sometimes people will forget or something like that, so, you know, you use your discretion and and warn them or something.
sometimes people will forget or something like that. So, you know, you use your discretion and, and warn them or something. And okay, we go along that. But there are situations where, um, you know, there might be a group of people, you know, on Main Street smoking cannabis. You know, if we want to make downtown friendly to, you know, people visiting to the restaurants and coming down to shop at the stores or whatever, um, or to patronize, you know, if we can bring back the Rockaway Truck Show or anything like that, the Main Street area, you know, we certainly want to have a tool in our toolbox to stop people from creating a public nuisance to the people that don't smoke or, or aren't participating in the, the cannabis. You know, I think the cannabis adds a whole new level to this because I was at a public event and there was children around passing stuff. There were people right next to me that started lighting up and, you know, they allowed it and it was just wrong. Through the subject of like. So I think, you know, unfortunately, it's not like, you know, we're gonna be the smoking police and, you know, there takes everybody down. No, it just gives us another tool.
I just want to make sure we're correct in this, because I didn't love to believe that this is correct. There is no way for us to differentiate between cannabis and tobacco products. Is that correct? So it's all smoking or, or not?
It, it's difficult to do, cause then you get to have the testing and you go to, ask somebody that's doing it, we have to get to a testing aspect. I, uh, and vaping sometimes, you know, can be the same.
Either or, yeah.
Can be the same, thinking of, like, that flavor.
Yeah, you can't tell from the smell what, what the person's got. Um, I've done some research on this because, um, I, I've had, I've had eight contacts from my ward so far. I'm kind of glad we tabled this. Seven of them, one way, one the other. Uh, I took it on myself to talk to some people on Main Street over the last three days. You know, managers, owners, and I'm hearing the other way from them. Uh, and that was over, over seventy-five percent. I mean, you know, we're at eighty, I'm talking ten. Two one way, eight definitely the other. Uh, I think this is a decision that, um, is gonna be tough for us. And I encourage everyone to take the next couple of weeks and really dig into this. I think the right decision needs to be made for the community. Um, I also think that we need to talk to our constituents and make sure we're making the right decision for them. Um, we are their representative. Um, however, uh, I'm totally with you. Uh, I understand walking down Main Street, uh, going in the community restaurant. Uh, with my fiancee walking in and, you know, boom, big cloud of icky, sticky, nasty smelling. You know, I mean, it's, it was pretty rough. Um, and we're getting that in some areas. We're getting, you know, daily grind on both ends. Um, we're getting in front of some of the head shops and in front of a couple of the bars, uh, where that's what you're smelling all the time. You know, I think it's, it's an important decision to be made, uh, and I want to make sure everybody makes the best decision for the people of the city when we do this. Uh, because I don't think it's to be taken lightly. We are, we are going to talk about a person's right to choose and do what they want, where they want. Also, we can also designate areas where people can do what they want. And, and, and keep it out from, in front of those people that it bothers. I'm, uh, I'm glad we have two more weeks, to tell you the truth. Uh, I think it's, this is tough. This is tough.
It's an important topic. It's an important thing. And I think through the research on that.
Yes.
Important to see that the, the disadvantage to the health.
Now, you just talked about quarter. A few minutes ago. You got a quarter without this fall, with the legal animation there on. And who's gonna wanna go out? You gotta, you gotta have a tool to be able to at least curb.
I'm breaking all the rules by letting people try, that's all right. No, that's okay.
One other consideration that I do not think you mentioned is maybe making smoking in public in downtown Main Street during certain hours, right? So, you know, during the daytime, I, I totally understand being not letting kids to walk by, um, so, um, maybe it's sometime after nine o'clock that you allow people to smoke on Main Street. But, uh, you know, completely getting rid of it. I think it past ways too many people. So it would be nice if you were to, I really appreciate you all being with my, and reminding me that it's not even.
And I, I agree with Steph about, um, people living in apartments that aren't allowed smoking in the apartment. But they have a right to smoke. It's just where are they going to be able to, you know, not on Main Street, not in front of bricks, not in front of the community, but they, they're gonna have to have an area. I, I smoked for thirty years. I quit twenty-one years ago. And it's still one with everyone still alive. Um, but I mean, that, those are the people I think we have to.
But I think the mayor talked about saving up the bridge so that, you know, they're allowed to come out the back entrance of the buildings and then make that.
Can. And I think if we go to Jennifer's point, people that are trying not to smoke and quit smoking, if they try to have to walk by, that's difficult too. So. I think they're definitely, you know, definitely, I mean, it's not like you're trying to inhibit anybody from anywhere, you know, sitting on their car, they go back in the house or residence, cause there's a lot of apartments upstairs and, well, not just those two complexes are really the only ones, but they could go behind every one of those buildings and do it, although, you know, that creates a problem probably as well. But at least it's condemned for this. If somebody wanted to go to those, you're not excluding them from going to. I think there's that whole exclusion. You say, who is it? Who gets the right? Who doesn't have the right? Well, nobody should be excluded from going to any place of business if they want to. So they have the option to go to the front. Then they have an option to smoke outside and in the back, so they're not obstructing. And so I can't pull in front of that building. If there's no parking in, in the main street, I had to go through the back, then that might be another issue. But I could park on one of the side streets, still stay on that sidewalk and walk freely from it and get to the room. So that would, that would be the intent. They're not really taking anybody's, you know, we're not, you know, always, anybody's rights, just the downtown business district where people come to. I would assume not smoking. And we, we didn't know marijuana paraphernalia and marijuana could be sold on the main street. So for that reason, this just takes it on that part. So again, homework. That's a lot of homework, but sit out there, you talk to people, get the feel, I think, uh, you know, some people might not speak up for it or might not speak against it, cause they might feel for whatever reason. But a one-on-one conversation would be helpful for everybody to have. I just appreciate the dialogue and appreciate. Agenda item number three, authorized mortgage subordination and agreement.
Resolved that the city of Cortland subordinates its mortgage instrument number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven four four eight. Recorded on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one with the Cortland County clerk. The above noted remaining deferred payment loan portion sets subordination to facilitate a new first mortgage with C F C U in the maximum amount of three hundred and three thousand dollars per set owner and further authorizes Mayor Scott Steve to sign a subordination agreement for the same.
Can I get a motion? I'll make a motion. Um, Mr. Scott, Mr. Carpenter, any questions?
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Thompson.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Agenda item number four, transfer funds to city departments for fuel budget sure.
Resolved that the common council approves transfer of funds totaling sixty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the contingency account number eight, one, three, two, five, dash, four, one, one, two, zero, to the following city department fuel lines. Uh, youth bureau account in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, police department account in the amount of thirty-two thousand, department of public works account in the amount of thirteen thousand and the fire department account in the amount of eighteen thousand.
Do you have a motion?
No motion.
Second, Mr. Pino, Mr. Carpenter, um, yeah, so obviously with fuel costs, we couldn't make it. So we tried to go along with it. So this is a modification for that. Any questions?
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Thompson.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Agenda item number five, operating sales, police department surplus vehicle.
Resolved that the common council hereby declares a two thousand fifteen Chevrolet Tahoe utilized by the Cortland Police Department as surplus and grants permission for the agency to sell the vehicle on auction international. With any proceeds from the sale being placed in the Cortland County Police Department two thousand twenty-two uh, budget account for operating equipment to be used towards the purchase of a new police vehicle and or equipment.
Mr. Scott, Mr. Carpenter, any questions on this?
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Thompson.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Agenda item number six, appoint Kerry Kane to wastewater treatment board.
Resolved that the common council does hereby affirm the appointment of Kerry Kane to the wastewater treatment board for a term beginning November first, two thousand twenty-two and expiring October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Take the motion. Ms. Lane, the corrector, any questions on this?
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Thompson.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Hi.
Agenda item number seven, operate cell, youth bureau surplus lifeguard equipment.
Resolved that the common council affirms the surplus of two lifeguard chairs and the affirmed result that the county council authorizes youth bureau director to sell the surplus lifeguard chairs on auctions international with the money from the sale appropriately appropriated to budget line A seven, one, eight, zero, point, five, two, zero, six.
Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Scott, any questions?
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Thompson.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Agenda item number eight, accept unrecognized donations to the youth bureau.
Resolved that the common council accepts the donations listed below and appropriates funds to the Cortland Youth Bureau operating budget accounts outlined below. Donation from Royal Motor Company in the amount of one thousand dollars for the youth football project in the small fry account budget line.
Do you have a motion? Mr. Scott, Mr. Thompson. I always appreciate these donations for sure.
Councilmember Scott.
Hi.
Councilmember Pino.
Hi.
Councilmember Lane.
Hi.
Councilmember Thompson.
Hi.
Councilmember Carpenter.
All right, I don't think we have any other discussion items. I think we have something I want to bring up while we're here.
Going.
Go through again.
One, one point, going back to, um, folks that are appointed to boards. I, I know you go through some sort of deliberations or conversations and have some dialogue with folks. Um, I'd like to know a little bit more depth of the people that were reviewing. Didn't see it.
Typically, yeah, typically we react, take the recommendation based on the board members that's there and what their need is circulated from that board. So I don't know that person either, but, you know, recognizing that that board, you know, is sure that they, what they need and what they recognize that they need on that board, that's what we do.
Okay.
So if you would like them to give a better, I can have them write a letter of support and that would help.
Two sentences, three sentences.
Okay.
It's all true. Of why justification criteria characteristics, I'm not sure.
So I'll make sure that happens on the next, I think there's one coming next month.
I'm sure they're qualified. I, I just.
Yeah, listen a little about that.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we got board recommendations. Some of the boards, the ones that I appoint, I will recommend a point, I would, we always submit that with, you get some kind of buyout. But when the other board is requested, I just kind of, they know I want to be, they can send out a memo to one board, some suggestions and outline that once.
We do have some data since coming, they're gonna be coming out with Z D A two, so I can have any suggestions here. Or certainly, certainly accept some as well.
Good point. Anybody else? Motion to again.